Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic with which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for all.
Role.
Graham Cassoun.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr. Absent. Green. Absent. Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
For real minutes.
Tonight we have the common council meeting minutes from June 19th, 2018.
So moved. Massey seconded by. Tobin. All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, anyone would like to address this council, please step forward.
My name is Dave Madden. My wife and I are the owners of Something Sweet and we live on Jackson Avenue here in this town. It's less than two weeks before the 13th Annual Run For Downtown. Just want to extend one more invitation to all the members of the council and to the general public. Saturday morning, August 18th, 13th Annual Run For Downtown starts and finishes right basically at Franklin Square in the heart of our downtown. Runners are going to take off, go down South Street, head out past the college, hang it right on Webb Road, hang it right on Wayway On to come in back down past the college, hang it left on Monhegan, go up the hill. Basically they'll come back down West Main Street and finish in the downtown. So there will be a little bit of disruption to some of the morning traffic. We apologize for that, but let's just come out, let's cheer the runners on. Maybe you bring a little garden hose out, sprinkle the runners when they go in and buy your house, and then come on downtown and see what happens on that morning. It is, in my opinion, one of the greatest mornings of the year in downtown Middletown. We have live music, we have refreshments, we have food, a $10 donation if you're not a runner or walker makes you a part of everything. It's four miles, so if you've got a little bit of athleticism in you, you can do it. But again, August 18th, it's a Saturday morning. I hope to see all of you and all of the public at this great event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Most of you know me, but my name is Susan Depew. And tonight I'm not talking about cleaning up Middletown. I'd like to talk about somebody that I have gotten to know, and this person is an employee of Middletown. I'd like to recognize one of the employees who most of you know as Brink. Most of you know Chris Brinkerhoff as a person who is organized, outgoing, enthusiastic, and involved. I officially met Brink when I started the Pride Committee in 2011. She showed up with Middletown High School athletes, Middletown Mayor's Club, and got her hands dirty and started the kids on a quest to clean up Middletown. What has always impressed me was and still is that her can-do attitude is her leader. One day, about four years ago, I saw Brink and she was in a field playing ball with the kids. And later on I said to her, "Chris, how do you do this?" And she said, "I make a point in knowing every kid's name. I know their family, and they would not do anything disrespectful if I'm around." And that is the quality that I'm just amazed at. I know that I get to know their family members, and when I get to know their family members, they wouldn't dare to do anything disrespectful. Chris's involvement goes beyond Middletown Rec Department. I'd just like to give a shout, Chris, you're doing a great job. Thank you for being part of Middletown.
Council. I, good evening. I'm Tom Benjamin. I just wish to read a letter. This is, again, flooding with issues with my property. Honorable President and members of the City Council, I've been advised by the City of Middletown Department of Public Works that I am illegally discharging groundwater in the city sewer system. Although I do not deny my action, it is important to know that I was instructed by the Commissioner of Public Works at the time, Mr. Fusco or Mr. Twill, I'm not sure which, to do so, which at the time I knew was not an acceptable situation or practice to resolve a neighborhood problem, which has affected me the most. As I have previously mentioned, in or around 1997, the city, Middletown, proposed a plan to solve the flooding problem at the city's expenses, but never followed up on that. I hired an attorney and filed an Article 78 to move the process along, but it is unsuccessful due to inability to continue paying for the legal costs. Lately, a plan was proposed to install a storm drain near my house. This plan is not feasible because there is already storm drains near my house, which has not resolved anything, and I repeat the word "anything." The city has told me several times to buy a drain for the neighborhood. I cannot do that for several reasons. First, this is not my problem. Second, I do not have the funds for that. And third, I have no permission to go to other people's property. Properties. The problem has been an ongoing issue, not just for me, but for the neighborhood and the City of Middletown. I hope your honorable members of the council examine this longstanding issue one more time and to find a reasonable solution that would solve the problem once and for all. Submitted respectively, Thomas Benjamin. Thank you for your time. And I'll leave this letter. Okay. Just the info. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The chief might want to, I don't know if the chief wants to go. Just getting at a tip.
I assumed you wanted the chief and we were about ready to move on. Okay, remarks of the department heads.
Good evening, everyone. Just to update you on some things that are going on regarding the DRI, Downtown Revitalization. Our facade program, legal ads went in the paper last week for construction bids. Eight buildings are out for bid right now. And Race For Space, that's the competition for the Woolworth Building. The applications were due today and we had seven submissions come in. So we're going to move forward towards reviewing those submissions and going forward with the competition. On the Community Development Agency front, we, this evening, the board approved two construction bids for the rehab of two CDA properties, 13 Ridge and 49 Prince, and that's for our homeownership program. Tonight also you have a resolution for Hudson River Valley Trail Grant, for planning funds. And on our Community Development Office, housing rehab projects are out and more projects are going to be going out for bid. And we're working on a small business loan. And also the Paramount Cultural Affairs, we've been having a great season, outdoor season, with movies, concerts. The weather's been pretty good to us, but we've still got many weeks left of entertainment. Our movies at the Paramount also are gaining strength, they continue to gain strength. And like Dave mentioned, Run For Downtown. So that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for Maria?
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Good afternoon. Last time we updated you on the ongoing construction projects throughout the city, so I'm not going to go through them again. If you have any questions, please let me know and I can address them. Today we had a water main break on Houston Avenue by Prospect, approximately from 1:00 PM until 4:00 PM, and we were able to take care of that break while the paving operation was ongoing. Obviously, we'll get into the paving. The guys have been doing a tremendous job, our DPW guys and the contractor and their paving operation, to try to take it, make it at least convenient to the public as possible. So we appreciate everybody's patience and we're going to have newer roads once we are done. We expect the program to be completed tomorrow, weather permitting, and it's very hot and it's terrible, so we're going to try to squeeze it in tomorrow and hopefully that will be the end of disruption for paving for this year. And that's really basically it. I'm going to conclude my comments. If you have any questions.
Any questions for the Commissioner? Omen John Francois.
Commissioner, do you have any updates on New York Rising?
Yes. We have the final report from the consultant, and they are, they have two options and they are available for us right now, and they have been ranked, as we discussed with them, the mayor and myself. And it's basically the, one of them is going to be daylighting the Brook from Janong Street to, from Janong to Academy. And the second option is replacing the bridge that crosses West Main Street by the, by the Monhegan, Monhegan Brook Crossing. That bridge is in very poor shape, and it's either we come up with the funding or we can replace it under this, under this program. It's really, it ranks high in the priority, very high, because it has to be done, that bridge. It has to be taken down and replaced and upgraded. It will have some benefit too for, regarding the flooding. So we're going to have to have a final discussion, the mayor, myself, and all of you, and to choose which option to go with, whether it is replacing the bridge on West Main Street, which needs to be done, it's a must, or doing the daylighting, which also, it does have great advantages in there. It used to rank number one on their priorities, priority list, until we found out that we have an issue with this West Main, West Main Street Bridge.
I know some of our residents are concerned about losing their home. Is that still part of the process?
There are no homes to be lost if there was daylighting the Brook in that location. There was never the intention to lose anybody's home. We were going to design around it, and however, some property would have had to be taken. And so we discussed that, and we were planning to meet on them one-on-one, the property owners that will be impacted, the mayor and myself, and whoever else the mayor chooses to meet with them and discuss it. But it's not going to be something that, this is the way it's going to be and that's the end of it. We were going to try to get their blessing by showing them how the area is going to be. It's going to be a great improvement to the area. It's going to be a parkland in there, it's going to be subject to, if there's a flooding in there, it will minimize, we want it to minimize any adverse condition of the flooding on the neighborhood and thereby having more of a green area, which will act as a detention pond in that location minimizing the adverse effect of the flood downstream. So it's really involved, involved process. So now we are between those two proposals. Replace the bridge, which we know we have to do, or do the daylighting, which probably will have much more environmental advantage, daylighting the Brook, but it may not be feasible because of the economy and the economics of things.
So funded, you can only do one?
It appears so, yes, sir. Plus some structural deficiency with the existing culverts, to try to address as much as we can with the leftover funding.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob.
Yep.
Fire Chief?
Anything to reply tonight? If there's any questions?
Any question for the Fire Chief? Thank you, Fire Chief. City Treasurer?
Call for a night.
Police Chief?
Good evening, Council. I just have a few things just to update you on as far as what we are doing in the community with the police department. The SRO program, the School Resource Officer Program began with the school on July 9th for the summer school sessions. We currently have an SRO assigned to Presidential Park and one to the Middletown High School. This September, by our contract, we'll have an additional police officer in the high school, as well as the Truman Moon Annex. It's been very positive thus far, great feedback on both ends, from the school and from the officers assigned. So I thank you for the support in that. Today kicked off our first of three sessions of our youth police academy. Officer Beebe is running again this year. It's a very successful program, a lot of interest in it, and if you get a chance to stop in for one of the graduations, this week's graduation will be Thursday, following that day will be on Friday. But I just want to recognize Officer Beebe and all the other volunteers that give their time to that program. It's a great program. Once again this year, we started our jump-out barbecues. We've done three so far throughout the various locations in the city. As in the past, we will not tell anybody where we are until we actually get there. And I, just on that note, I'd like to thank Parks and Rec and the Fire Department for all of their support. They've joined us and we couldn't do it without them. And tonight you'll be voting on a resolution from the Fire Department for a donation of $275, which is to be used for the funding of these programs. So thank you to the Fire Department for that. Just to go back a little bit, July 21st, we, the police department along with Parks and Rec, hosted Cops and Kids at Davich Park. It was a great success. There's been a lot of write-up and press in the newspaper about it. But it's one of the many programs that we'd like to implement to build on those relationships with the children of the community. I'd also like to recognize Mr. Massey for your efforts in the exam, the police exam. Our police exam will be September 15th, and through Mr. Massey's efforts, we've, have over 400 applicants thus far. Oh, actually, it closed. It closed. I apologize. I apologize. It did close on August 2nd, so there are no more applicants, so we're 480-some?
483.
483. On the same note, on August 18th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Police Tutorial Services will be at Orange County Community College conducting a study cram course for the entry-level police officer exam. We've actually worked out an agreement with this company that any city resident that is taking the exam will be offered a reduced rate of $75 for the course. All other test takers would pay the fee of $150. The last thing is just like to recognize Kate for all of your efforts with Night Out. Tomorrow night is Night Out. I know there's a lot of time and effort that goes into coordinating and organizing and all of that, but thank you for doing such, and I hope many people could join us tomorrow night. Davich Park, fireworks, music, all types of activities.
Any questions for the Police Chief? Thank you, Chief.
Good evening. Just to build a little off what the chief just said with Cops and Kids Day, what a great collaboration. A lot of great high school kids there helping the police officers. I would like to also give a shout out to the Orange County Youth Bureau that gave us a mini grant, would actually helped us pay for all the food for that event, and that's greatly appreciated. We are getting phone calls from other towns in our office to duplicate the things that are happening in collaboration here in this town right now. The towns are talking about the pop-up parties, other towns are talking, we got a lot of positive press on the Cops and Kids Day, and I hope that becomes contagious throughout the county. I think that's a great thing. Sue, thank you for your kind words. Luckily, I get to go to a job I love to do every day. We have great kids out there. We don't hear about the great things the kids are doing. We hear more negative things, but our kids are doing more great things than negative things. Also, I want to, the mayor's youth council has started their school supply drive. I'd like to thank Sue Depew. She was one of our first donators and came in with a whole lot of school supplies, probably over $150 worth of school supplies to give to kids. So also a shout out to Sue Depew. This fall, you're going to see quite a few park improvements. We have a lot we're going to surprise you with. One of the resolutions you have tonight is $5,000 donation from Little League, which will help with some park improvements up at Watts Park. We're looking to put some handicap parking up in the back of Watts Park and some walkways to those back fields, as well do some improvements to infield dirt and some safety netting. And we'll have some other park projects I'll be letting you know about soon. Believe it or not, fall is here. It is time to register now for fall programs, so folks can call the Recreation Department. We have a little bit of space left in the preschool program. Our morning is full, but our afternoon has space. After-school programs, this is the time to sign up for that. We're in all the elementary schools with very affordable after-school programs. We have soccer, cheerleading, volleyball, boxing, and preschool playtime. And everything's very affordable to our families, and please call for information. And that is all I have this evening.
Any questions for Chris?
Yep, and the one thing too, and I don't want to rain on Kate's parade because I know she has Night Out, but Friday is also a community campout. It was postponed from a rain date. And Saturday, there's also a free basketball tournament being run by the Middletown Cares and their agencies right on the court. And that's on top of everything downtown is doing. So there's something every evening in Middletown to take your family to that costs nothing, and that's a great thing. Makes it a great place to live.
Thank you. City Clerk?
I just have two things tonight. Next week, I'm sorry, the next meeting, August 21st, we're going to have a public hearing on the TD Bank Building. I left all the plans in your box. We just got a new updated plan, so that'll be next on August 21st. All the information will be on our website for that public hearing. It sits inside the city-owned property. We will be doing the mail-ins for that. So that is next, August 21st, at 8:00 PM. One other thing is there's going to be a primary election, and it's going to be Thursday, September 13th. And there was some confusion about that, but it is Thursday because Tuesday is 9/11, so they changed it to Thursday. And all the polls will be open, and there'll be more information on the website, and I'm sure from the Board of Elections on that. That's all I have.
Questions for John? Thank you, John. Civil Service?
Just want to reinforce what the chief said, that I want to thank everyone that did apply for the test. We did have, like I said, I think we've got 483. But the deadline has passed, and I do apologize for anyone that has come up late, and we've unfortunately had to turn you away, but look, the announcement was put out on June 1st. The deadline was August 2nd. So I think we gave enough time, but I know there are still some people that are dissatisfied. But it is what it is. Looking forward to the test, and Chief, thank you and your department. You guys did a lot of work and brought in a lot of people, and I'm hoping at the end of the whole process, we will, we as the city will benefit from some really good candidates. Thank you.
Good evening. Is Kaitlyn Ludwigson here?
Yes.
Yes. You missed your chance to talk, Kaitlyn. You wanted to talk about?
Yeah, I was.
Yeah, yeah. That's okay. Come on up now. You can have some of my time.
Okay. I appreciate it, thanks. Hi, my name is Kaitlyn. I'm a medical student from the local medical college, Toro. I wanted to come speak to you guys today about an event that we would like to put on in the City of Middletown. The month of September is National Ovarian Cancer Awareness, and our school would like the city to be involved this year. They also do this over in Warwick and a couple other towns in the county, so we would love Middletown to be involved. This would involve us hanging teal ribbons on the lamp posts and the trees downtown, as well as handing out pamphlets to local businesses to provide to their customers on ovarian cancer awareness. It will be funded by a local memorial fund, the Corinne Feller Memorial Fund, to provide these pamphlets and ribbons. And that would be fantastic if we could have your permission to bring this event to our city. Thank you, guys.
Just give Karen your information. Karen will take your information.
Wonderful, thank you.
Do you want the proclamation? One September?
Yes. Sorry, thank you.
And a resolution from the board declaring September ovarian cancer awareness a month. That would be appreciated by them also. Okay. Couple issues that I'd like to first address. One is that you have a resolution on, for tonight, for $3 million for the screw pumps at the sewage treatment plant. And I know you thought I was referencing Massey when I said screw pump, but it's a significant investment. We have six pumps there. Two of them have failed. They're old. All of them are old. We have an opportunity for a 25% direct grant from the state of New York that we have applied for, and we're hoping that we'll be able to be successful in reducing the cost from $3 million down to under $2.4 million. Those are the projected numbers, of course, on the bid. So we're asking for your support on that. Obviously, four of them have not failed, but we, with all that we're doing with our plant, we need to bring it up to current standards. It's, environmentally, it's the right thing to do. Operationally, it's the right thing to do. And to the taxpayer, it's the right thing to do. The cost of the bond would be $185,000 a year at $3 million. So obviously, the more grant money, that number comes down. But it will be a self-paying thing with, again, I keep coming back to CPV and Amy's Kitchen and those types of things. So that was the purpose of entering those agreements, is to pay for this infrastructure without impacting our taxpayers, or overburdening our taxpayers and our water and sewer users. Many of you have talked about the, some of the zombie properties in your neighborhoods. I know Dr. Johnson and Kate have been on 38 West Conklin quite a bit. The good news is we are going to be able to address both 99 Wickham Avenue, which the asbestos has already been abated on from last year, and 38 West Conklin. We found some money in this year's budget, DPW budget, so we will be putting them out for, I think we already have a price on both, if I remember right from Jacob. Yeah, so we, so those two will be coming down very shortly. We're going to have to look at the bigger picture with some of the other neighborhoods also. But one thing we have been doing, and you're at the meeting, so you know, is we, the CDA does take over these properties and we do an evaluation. If the property can be rehabbed, like 49 Prince, 53 Prospect and others, we do it. We voted on two more tonight, which is 49 Prince and I forget the other one, where it was?
Ridge Street.
Ridge Street, 13 Ridge Street. So those two properties will all be rehabbed and sold to homeowners. But 99 East Avenue, for example, is a property that we own, that we've looked at, and it's not rehabilitable for a fair amount of money, a reasonable amount of money. We've been speaking to the church next door. I think they're present here tonight. They are interested in purchasing the property, and you might say, why would we do that when it's not rehabilitable for us? Well, the purpose is to tear it down, and they would build a parking lot for their church, which they're crunched a little bit there. It does have conditions in the agreement of up to one year. They'll be paying us $1,000, and within one year, they will tear down the building and build a parking lot for their church. We've also done that with a few other properties around the city, so it's, so if, our goal is not to tear down property, our goal is to rehab them when they can be rehabbed, but if not, then we'll work deals like this with property owners adjacent to it to remove the problem, property. Hopefully, you'll support that tonight. It did pass the Board of Estimant. Some of the stuff, an update on the Heritage Trail. I know Jerry asked me before the meeting. We have reached all the agreements with the county and Amy's and the DEC. Everything is in place. We were supposed to have a press conference today with the county executive that got postponed, but it's not because we're in disagreement. We're in agreement. We're just waiting for the final contract to be forwarded. All the language has been agreed upon amongst the attorneys. Mr. Smith and his assistant Jacob have reviewed the contract, and they have made sure that, looking 20, 30, 40 years down the road, basically, for when we're not around here. So we're happy with the agreement, and we'll be presenting, signing it as soon as it's presented to us in its full form, and hopefully the county will move very quickly on getting the project out to bid. As we move forward with recreational opportunities in our community, you're going to be voting on tonight a proposal from Carter Strickland, I believe his last name is. Carter is a world-renowned, or at least a United States-renowned, US-renowned, expert on urban parks and open parks and open areas. And for many years, I've worked on a project without much success of allowing access to probably our greatest community access, which is the, our community asset, which is the reservoir properties. The state DEC encourages hiking and biking in these areas. The state DEC encourages hiking and biking in these areas for a couple of reasons, one being security, more people, more security. Also, there's a recognition that you need to make an investment, a local community investment. You have to have an appropriate plan in place, appropriate security plans, appropriate maintenance plans. But our reservoir properties, and I know many of you took advantage of the opportunity to tour the property with us, and the infrastructure, the roads are inside, in there, in place, the trails are in place. So what we're looking to do is to develop a plan that would give our residents and possibly others and visitors the opportunity to bike and hike throughout our reservoir property. Not camping, not boating, bike and hike, similar to what they do at the New York City reservoirs now. So Carter has submitted a proposal to us that will address what we believe to be all the issues and list out the goal and purposes. It gives the backgrounds. It gives some interesting statistics on access to recreational properties. And whether we do it or don't do it, it'll be useful information as we move forward. I think we will probably do it, but the, of course, we need to get public input on both the positive side and on the negative side, if there is a negative side. We also have to understand that there's going to be a financial commitment moving forward with both security and cleanliness, keeping the, you know, we don't want to take this pristine property and have it littered with people going through it. So you have had the proposal. Tonight, I'm asking for your authorization to submit the grant request for 50% of the cost of the proposal. And if successful, then we will move ahead with the application. If not successful, then I'm asking for 100% of the cost of the grant submission and the report that would be prepared by this company. And that's a total cost of about $50,000. So we're hoping that in the end, we'll have a beautiful recreational opportunity for people who live in the city and others, and give people an additional reason to visit our community. The goal would be, you could eventually bike, start on the trail in Harriman and bike right up through our reservoir properties if need be. Or you could drive there yourself, or you can start downtown, but the options are endless. I know Chris, we took the Recreation Department up there, and she was just flabbergasted by the, by the property and the beauty of the property. And so we're asking for your support on that tonight. And as I said, we haven't made any definitive decisions. I'm leaning towards doing that. I've always been supportive of it. But now it's time to have the experts come in, do the mapping, do the analysis, and let us know what the positives and negatives are to doing such a thing, and then we'll be moving forward with it. Hopefully, by next year, people will be, have the opportunity to bike through this beautiful, heavily wooded area. And that's all I have for tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Alman Kleiner?
Yes, Mayor, would you just comment a little bit on Mr. Benjamin's situation?
Yeah, this has been an ongoing problem for many years. If you've, if you've been around long enough, and I think you have, Jerry, the, we did have a solution many years ago, and Mr. Benjamin refused to sign the easements. That was a different time, and we were unable to actually go onto his property at that time and do the work that was necessary. Some of the neighbors also did not want to sign easements, so, and it's questionable whether we can go on private property and do work. We thought it was more of a benefit to the region, to the area, and there was different thoughts on that, on whether we can or we can't. But that's yesterday's weather. We do have opportunities throughout the city. I know on Liberty Street, there's another area where there are some low areas. People have, in Mr. Benjamin's specific case, he put in a sump pump that lowered the water table, I think, by 14 feet on his property, and he tied it directly into the sanitary sewer. That is not a Middletown code. That's New York State DEC, and it's punishable by heavy fines by the DEC. So he's been given an order to cease and desist doing that immediately or face the wrath of the penalties from the DEC. We're looking at different parts of the city that we can do drain basins and then give the opportunity to the homeowner to tie directly into the drain basin. We, when it comes to groundwater, we cannot go on their property to do work. So they can do a couple of things. They can either grate it so it goes to the street without affecting their neighbor, or they can put a pipe in to tie it directly into the sanitary sewer, I mean, the storm sewer. So we do have the plans. We have been looking at them. We have been looking at access to some funding to do it. We believe we have some storm drainage money. But that money, you know, every one of you has the same complaints in your own wards, and we're trying to address the, everyone's concerns when it comes to storm drainage. So we don't have enough money to do everyone, but we are trying to prioritize. The engineers will make a recommendation on what is the most prior, the highest priority, and possibly, one of the criteria to look at would be whether the homeowner has the resource to then tie into the storm drain to correct, to correct the problem on their own property. So putting storm sewers in the, in the street won't solve the problem unless the homeowner ties into that said storm sewer. So it's complicated. It's an old city and requires some infrastructure upgrades, which we are doing. But this, you know, same with down by Sprague Avenue. That, I believe, is one of the lowest parts of the city, and you're not going to 100% cure the flooding down there. And I do support the bridge versus the daylighting, based on the information that I have at this point. So daylighting would be nice, but the bridge is a necessity. So we're making choices, and that's what we're going to be facing in the next, probably, meeting, is making choices on all these matters. But it's not just one person, and that's what we have to understand. There's multiple people throughout the city that have concerns about storm sewer.
Right. No, I know Mr. Benjamin's situation is a little unique because of that pipe that we, the clay pipe that brings the water down, that we don't know where it comes from.
Correct.
And that's always been his concern, so hopefully, we can address that, too.
Yeah, we had the same problem across Lake Avenue on Ashland and with some of the neighbors there, and they started clogging up the pipe themselves because the city did not have easements through there. We don't know who put the pipe in. But we're not allowed to go on private property and do work unless there's a benefit. And the lawyers, to be honest with you, are split on this. We could, you know, we're having an audit right now. New York State Comptroller's Office is here doing an audit, and unless there's the appropriate justification and that our attorneys are comfortable with, we cannot go on private property. That's why the solution I, that we're looking at for all of these areas is possibly give them access to storm sewer. If you have the ability then to tie into that storm sewer, then you're bringing your groundwater or some pump water out into the storm sewer, not the sanitary sewer. So that's the biggest problem right now.
Okay, anyone else? Alman Johnson?
I'm here with the Greenway Conservancy. I missed if you said, how much is that grant for?
The grant would be 50%.
What percent of the...
50% of the contract that we're...
So it'd be about 25?
About 25. Caitlin's still here. I believe we applied for 25 or 30,000. I'm not sure what it was. Because one of the proposals, you know, the security component, is not finalized yet. So we might have increased it a little bit and waiting on that final, final number.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, Rashford Alderman? Aldman Burr?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Chris and John for our annual picnic meeting that we had last Wednesday. I'd like to thank the Maddens and the Wockells for their, we are recipients of our awards. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Alman John Francois?
Good evening. I gotta say, Night Out Against Crime and Run For Downtown is becoming one of the best activities that's going around the city of Middletown. So Kate, tomorrow, I'm wishing you luck. A lot of people will show up. Hopefully, the weather holds off, and you've been putting a lot of work during the night out. Appreciate that. So hopefully, everybody will come out and support. Thank you.
Alman Kleiner?
Thank you, Mr. Benjamin. Thank you for your presentation, and I have your letter from last year with really the same issues, and I hope we can come up with some way to resolve them. We'll be looking at it very closely. We'll have a second award meeting a week from today. I believe that's be the 13th at 7:00 p.m. I think Andrew will be back, will be here by then. And I don't get up this early in the morning, but I did have an email from someone who said they heard on WTBC this morning that there would be no work done on the Heritage Trail this year. And you know, so much of what we're doing is dependent on the trail, and we heard last year that the county was good to go, and our timeline said construction would be starting in April. We, in the meantime, Amy's would start laying pipes, and we'd all move forward, and we've heard it again and again every year. So I would say tomorrow at Night Out, it's usually the county people come by and visit, and if you see Mr. Newhouse tomorrow at Night Out, please ask him where the hell's our trail. Maybe we can get an answer. Maybe we're ready to go on an intermunicipal agreement, but you know, I'm going to remain the skeptic. When it's signed, I'll be cheering, but we need to, we need to get moving. That's really been going on for longer than Mr. Benjamin's problem. Next year, it'll be a quarter of a century. It'll be 25 years, and that's what they say. We're put off now for 25 years to try and build a trail. Thank you.
Ole Ray Kasun?
Good evening. First, I just want to respond to Sue Depew's statement tonight about Christine Brinkerhoff, and honestly, I have to 100% agree with everything you came up here to say. I don't know what any of us would do without Brink here in Middletown. No one has more passion or energy for this city. She's the lifeblood of our Recreation Department, and I think we're all very lucky to have her. I know I can't function doing the activities that I do here, mainly. My big event tomorrow night, Night Out, I rely on her help, her advice, her energy. She's there for me that night all the time, hands-on, like you said, energy, hands-in, ready to go. So speaking of Night Out, I'll move on to that. Thank you, Brink, by the way. Night Out Against Crime, it's tomorrow night, starts 5:00, Davage Park. It's going to be another outstanding evening. We cap off the night with fireworks to finish. I just need to take one moment tonight to thank our local businesses and our sponsors for the event, because without them, this event does not take place. It is not a budgeted item here in Middletown. It's based solely on the donations of our local business community. So I want to thank them. Our fireworks sponsor for the evening is Boyce Excavating, and I want to thank them for coming out to do that for us. Our gold-level sponsors this year include Royal Pools and CPV and Clark Patterson Lee Engineering. We have silver sponsors, the Kiwanis Club, my thanks to them, Fusco Engineering, Orange and Rockland, Healy Brothers, and TruX Plumbing. Our bronze-level sponsors include Mid-City Transit, DeFazio Attorney's Office, Candle Brothers, Hudson Heritage Federal Credit Union, Sierra Automotive, Saucers Garden and Farm Equipment, Middletown Lions Club, Middletown Professional Firefighters Association, Tony Baffa's Restaurant, Todd Lyons Paving, Appleby McPhillips Funeral Home, Middletown Honda, our PBA, and of course, our big contribution from our police department, which we appreciate as well. And I just want to say, this is an outstanding evening to come out and interact with the Middletown Police Department. I truly believe we have one of the best police departments around. Our officers are outstanding. Their buy-in to our community, our youth, is without comparison. And this is a great opportunity. They're out to play. We have a lot of things to do. We have a video game trailer. We have an inflatable jousting pit. We have a dunk tank and obstacle course. There will be Zumba. We have a DJ. We'll have vehicles on the field for kids to explore. So there's just so much to do. We'll have officers all over the park. They're playing basketball with the kids. This is just a really great night. So I don't mean to go on and on, but this is my one night that I talk a little too much at the mic, but I hope everybody comes out tomorrow. I also cross my fingers that we have great weather right through to the end, and we get our fireworks show in, so I hope to see everyone there tomorrow night. My thanks.
Alman Johnson?
Thank you. I just want to remind you, we'll have a legislative committee meeting on the 21st as well. We'll discuss the issues that were raised regarding potential animal ordinances by Marlena Lang. There's a resident with a request that requires a legislative remedy, so we'll talk about that. And Alex Smith is taking a look at both of those things. With respect to the conversation on the zombie homes, that is on my worksheet for Legislative Committee that started back in June. If we're going to do anything with that, as far as budgeting, that would probably happen next year, but we certainly appreciate the little bit of progress that we've made with these two particular properties, because almost every resident knows of a house that we will call a zombie home, and they really do detract from our quality of life here in our community. Thank you very much.
Alman Tobin?
Yeah, I'd like to start off by thanking St. John Zion Church for purchasing the 99 East Avenue, helping the community get rid of an eyesore over there and giving them a parking lot. I really think it's a win-win for everybody, so I'd like to thank them. Appreciate it. I'm pleased that it sold. I'd like to thank Alderman, Ram, Kasun, and the Police Department. There's, it's not an accident that we have a positive relationship between the Police Department and the community. It's all the hard work that we do throughout the year that really makes this community strong. And I also like to thank Brink for the indoor picnic. Appreciate their hard work and all the activities and opportunities they offer our children. My kids went to the pop-up barbecue. That was great. And all the support we have. They work seven days a week, especially this time of year, to provide all these, these opportunities for our kids, so thank you.
Alman Massey?
Kate, I want to thank you for all the hard work I know you put in for tomorrow, and on behalf of the Kiwanis, we're happy to be there and support you. And Dave, on your run for downtown, I won't be running, but I know I will be there with the Kiwanis and will certainly help out, and I hope there, we get a really big turnout. Things are really going well in Middletown, and we'd like to see it continue to go this well. Thank you.
New business?
I have a resolution sponsored by Alderman and Ram Kasun to authorize the treasurer to accept a total of $4,500 in support of Night Out Against Crime.
Responsible by Alman Kasun, second by Alman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman and Ram Kasun to approve the 2018 Night Out for Crime budget that is fully funded by donations.
Responsible by Alman Kasun, second by Alman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alman Tobin to authorize the treasurer to make a $5,000 transfer within the 2018 operating budget of the Middletown Recreation and Parks Department to cover overages on chlorine deliveries.
Resolution responsible by Alman Tobin, second by Alman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alman Kleiner to authorize the treasurer to accept a $275 donation given to the Middletown Police Department for the Middletown Fire Department, from the Middletown Fire Department, to use this donation to help and fund the second annual Jump Out Barbecue.
Resolution responsible by Alman Kleiner, second by Alman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alman Kleiner to authorize the treasurer to accept a $275 donation given to the Middletown Police Department for the Middletown Fire Department, from given to the Middletown Police Department from the Middletown Fire Department to use this donation to help fund the second annual jump-out barbecues.
Resolution responsible by Alvin Kleiner, seconded by Alvin Jean-François. Any discussion? Roll.
Rancassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Jean-François to accept the bids for chemicals.
Resolution responsible by Alvin Jean-François, seconded by Alvin Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Rancassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Johnson to grant a 30-day waiver notification requirement for Gino's Luncheonette at 180 Monhegan Avenue set forth by Section 64 2A of the New York Alcoholic Beverage Control Law.
Resolution responsible by Alvin Johnson, seconded by Alvin Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Rancassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Johnson to authorize the mayor, as sole authorized signatory, to sign all necessary documents for submission pertaining to grant application to the 2018 Greenway Conservancy for the Hudson River Valley Trail Grant Program.
Resolution responsible by Alvin Johnson, seconded by Alvin Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Rancassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Massey to replace six screw pump wastewater treatment plant that were installed in the late 1980s at a cost of $3 million plus engineering charges from C.D.M. Smith of $233,800.
Resolution responsible by Alvin Massey, seconded by Alvin Jean-François. Any discussion? Roll.
Rancassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Massey authorizing the issuance of $3 million in serial bonds to pay the cost of replacement of the screw pumps at the water treatment plant for the city.
Resolution responsible by Alvin Massey, seconded by Alvin Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Rancassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Jean-François to approve the sale of 99 East Avenues to St. John's Zion Church.
Resolution responsible by Alvin Jean-François, seconded by Alvin Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Rancassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Johnson to approve the proposal for a study for the water supply lands access use and facility assessment.
Resolution responsible by Alvin Johnson, seconded by Alvin Rancassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Rancassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. That is all for new business.
Audit?
Mr. President, I move the accounts be audited, the claims be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to wish a warrant for their payment.
Resolution responsible by Alvin Massey, seconded by Alvin Tobin. Roll.
Rancassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Can you draw me? Go move.